There we go.
Yep, okay, cool.
But you have to be like right on top of it, it seems.
And then I'm gonna hit, do I hit present yet or not yet?
Whenever you want.
Okay. Where, oh, from beginning.
We don't have it on the screen.
How do we get it on the screen? Okay.
When your, when the meeting starts.
Okay, cool.
Rhonda, we might have a little bit of technical difficulty, because I want to make sure that they're not seeing the presenter notes on their screens, so, but we'll play with it in a minute.
Okay.
Well, go ahead and start the work session, and let's call it to order. We'll start the work session with area-wide plan and market analysis presented by Rhonda Bell, Principal Planner at Stantec, and Helen West from the City of Cortez.
Thank you, Councilmember. So I think you are on this committee, Councilmember Spruill, but we, about a year and a half ago, started a South Broadway Corridor Market Analysis and Area-Wide Plan as part of a grant through the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And I'll let Rhonda Bell, our consultant from Stantec, talk a little bit more, but first, I just want to give you a brief overview of the market analysis. The market analysis is just going to be a document that is very interesting. There wasn't as much community input for this market analysis. It was more just that, a market analysis, from an expert given to us. So I'm just giving this for your and our community's information. Later, the South Broadway Area-Wide Plan, it's more of an revitalization strategies, will be up for adoption and approval by council at the regular session. So I just want to be very clear that the market analysis is separate from that area-wide plan. I do think that the market analysis is interesting and worth telling you guys about, but from here on out, it'll just be a document that lives on our website for information for ourselves, for you, and the community. All right, so the purpose of this was to really design an implementation idea for community vision through public and private investment, and public and private partnerships, understanding that the forces behind this investment might be near-term and long-term. So near-term is like investment within the next 10 years. Long-term would be investment or development beyond 10 years from now. The study area, as you can see in the kind of bottom left-hand corner, matches the South Broadway Area-Wide Study, and it is topographically very different from other gateways, which I thought was, like, we all know that, but it's interesting to, like, conceptualize the idea that this gateway is very different. If you think of the gateways on the northern and eastern side of Cortez, those are much flatter, whereas South Broadway has those canyons and the ravines, so it prevents development from growing out beyond that study area too much. Traffic volumes for both cars and trucks are very high, as we know. They suggest that without strong placemaking components, that includes attractive lighting, street trees, safe multimodal opportunities, that commercial opportunities might be missed as people just drive through the corridor. So by increasing the overall appeal of that corridor, we might attract more commercial opportunities for our business people. Also, we know this anecdotally, since we live here in Cortez, but traffic control is pretty minimal in that South Broadway area. You can see how many traffic lights are on the other part of Main Street, and once you get to South Broadway, we have one. The recommendation, so this is yet another document that we can show to CDOT, is to slow the speed down, possibly through more traffic control. And then just some other context that the study outlines. So we have a lot of commercial highway, existing land uses, so fast food, roadside motels, automobile dealerships, and other audio-oriented businesses. There is new development near the airport at the Mavericks, Loves, and Dollar General, and then other opportunities. Oh, and you can see this map kind of centers Cortez as the center of the Four Corners area. We are within 150-mile radius of 19 different national park sites, and then also, the study highlights the Yoot Mountain Casino as one of the largest, actually the largest hotel in the Cortez area, so another opportunity, people staying there might be coming into Cortez to do business. Socioeconomic, economic analysis of our town. Again, I found these interesting, but they are kind of anecdotally what we know to be true living here. Our population growth is forecasted to slow down and stabilize by 2050, excuse me, that says 2020, it should say 2050. Population growth is also expected to forecast to slow for all areas. So compared to 1990 and 2020, there was a pretty large population growth all across the area, including all of Colorado, and that whole thing is expected to slow down. We know, and have seen this, but number of older adults has been growing rapidly and is expected to continue that growth. The median household income remains much lower than our neighboring areas, particularly La Plata County, and interestingly, our income is rising at a slower rate. So when you look at the graph, La Plata's graph is much steeper than Monizuma's, so we're not keeping up with the economic growth that our neighbors are seeing. Job growth across the county remains relatively flat, and then healthcare and education currently account for nearly 30% of all the jobs in Monizuma County. Retail jobs are also more prevalent than our neighboring La Plata County, which I found interesting. The market analysis discusses how tourism impacts our retail. As we know, La Plata is also a very big tourism destination, so I just found it interesting that we have, per capita, more retail jobs than La Plata. Now, some market conditions. Just, just again, interesting kind of data. Monizuma County's retail inventory is 150 properties, 97% of that is occupied. This potential misalignment with demand might be a pent-up kind of demand. We have not built new retail space really in a long time. We've only built three new buildings since 2014. And then, interestingly, our average retail rent is much lower than our neighbors in the state of Colorado. I also want to point out that low vacancy in a retail market can be a positive indicator, or it can be symptomatic of other issues, which we also anecdotally know to be true. High construction costs, high financing costs can limit those market opportunities to develop new retail, even when the market demands it. Market conditions for office spaces. There are two primary types of users in an office space, the large corporate offices, I kind of think of this as our Osprey office, versus those smaller professional rentals, where people are just having an office to meet people. I don't know if this is accurate for right now, today, but when this study data was done about a year ago, 100% of those available rentals were occupied. We, again, have not had very many development of office space. We've had two buildings built since 2014. Interestingly, our office rent was actually higher than La Plata, so $13 per square foot, versus in La Plata, they charge, on average, $11 per square foot for office space. And then, just a rant, like, I found this really interesting, I had no idea. The average US cost of office space is 35 per square foot, so glad we're not there. And then lastly, we've talked to you guys a lot about housing, but this also made its way into the market analysis. They were noticing, and that whole area, as you guys know, is commercially zoned, so it's really not suitable for residential R1 or R2 family-style development in that area. However, multifamily could be a potential complementary use. In the commercial zone, you cannot have fully residential, but it could be, you know, someone could potentially build a building with market on the bottom with some apartments on the top, or something like that. So they pointed this out, that they, we have very limited supply of multifamily housing, only 2.5% of all of our housing units are multifamily, and Tawi Khan is the first newly constructed apartment building in Cortez in over 20 years. And then I'm not going to read these, but they had some interviews with experts familiar to real estate trends and development, so they really pointed out some development challenges and barriers, which include kind of the perception of the corridor is ugly or not safe. And then also, they pointed out the development opportunities. So there's a lot of traffic volume, great wide-open spaces, beautiful views, better connections to some of those trails, the new development down south on Road G, near the airport, could inspire other development or businesses. And then some conclusions and recommendations. Again, these are coming from our consultants, but just some things to keep in mind or think about. So the South Broadway Corridor is well-suited to capture commercial development, it is all-zoned commercial, and that private-public partnerships and other investments could incentivize this redevelopment. We also have an opportunity to take advantage of our proximity to parks and outdoor spaces. We have many tourists, retired and older adults, and remote workers. This study did call out remote workers as a potential draw to our amenities and the outdoor activities located just outside our door. I thought this was in the next, in bold and orange, is really, I don't know, this made me happy and a little bit heartened, that our local developers, what we in the business call accidental developers, with an acumen for cultivating and fostering independent, family-owned businesses, are probably the most likely path forward for new development in any spot in Cortez, but especially along South Broadway. So I thought that was really interesting. Of course, tourism, outdoor retail, and experience, experiential activities will probably see the strongest growth. Multifamily rental housing could be a complementary, and I did highlight complementary, because again, that commercial zoning does not allow for single-use residential. Could be a potential complementary use to potential businesses, and then they also recommended that focus, focusing business attraction efforts on eds and meds, as they say, market sector. So as we see an increase in older adults moving to the city, we need more medical care. That is something that is needed in our community. We also have a large industry that supports that already. So, that's just the market study, kind of interesting information. And before I hand it over to Rhonda, I'm gonna try to, I don't know if this is gonna work. Oh, wait, I think I have to stop presenting. You know what? I'll do it in a minute.
Hey Helen, I have a really quick question for you. You talked a little bit about retail, sales, and tourism in La Plata County and here in Monizuma County. Is there any way, or hasn't been captured, the impact of the two reservations here in Cortez versus, say, Durango? And I'm wondering if there's a difference between, like, actual tourism and people literally coming day and spending money at Big R, maybe going for lunch, or something?
So there is ways to track that, but it involves signing up for expensive software that tracks people's cell phones, and then can link your credit card and your cellphone to your zip code, and then it could tell me where most of that business is coming from. That is very expensive. And also, while all of the data is scrubbed, it's not identifiable. It could pose a potential frustration, even though we are already being tracked, like, other cities are using that data on us all day, every day. So we don't have that. So I can't answer the question, but it exists. It can be answered. We just don't have the data to do that. I will say that, and Brian Bartlett from Mesa Verde has talked about this, but we have seen since 2019, of course, in 2019, when the pandemic happened, we took a nosedive in terms of lodgers tax, right? All of, across the country took a nosedive. La Plata and our neighboring counties have basically regained that growth. They are seeing more, it's not much, but slightly more lodging tax in the last, in 2023, from where they should have been, if the COVID had never happened. We have not regained that yet. So ours has not reached pre-COVID levels lodging-tax-wise in 2023. We do not have data for 2024 or 2025, obviously. However, our sales tax has remained consistent, relatively consistent year over year. I infer that that means we have a relatively, I mean, this is all me, but my inference is that we have a relatively stable local or regional folks coming to buy and spend money in sales tax, but they are not staying in our hotels because they are local. So we are not losing sales tax revenue to tourism, but we have an opportunity. If we could capture more of that tourism market, we could see even more growth in our sales tax revenue. Again, I have no data except those two references.
I was just gonna say, I like your inference, it makes sense.
Yeah. And with Durango lowering their, I'll just add this, if you don't know, Durango took some of their marketing dollars for tourism and put it into affordable housing, so I'm a little bit concerned that we won't see the trickle-down effect of tourists coming to Durango, realizing Cortez is cool too, and coming over the pass, but we also have an opportunity to maybe market in a different way and try to recapture those tourists. All right, enough of Helen's speculations. So we are gonna turn it over to Rhonda Bell. You've heard from her before. I don't think you'll see her on the screen, unfortunately, but you will hear her voice. She is a planner with Stantec.
Thanks, Helen. Hey Helen, I can see both the slides and the speaker notes, but I imagine you're probably using two screens. Can the council just see the slide kind of maximized?
Yep, they can just see the, the main slide. And just give me a cue with your finger or something, and I'll push the button to go next.
Okay. Really, I just don't want anyone to steal my thunder and have you see the notes of what I'm going to say. So, thanks, Helen, and members of the council. We last spoke to you in November, and that was just before we were actually producing and writing the area-wide plan. And so, everything that you'll see here is largely the same. There haven't been any large, significant changes to the content since we did that. A couple minor refinements, but that's it. So we'll talk about, just remind you what the project is, where it is, how it's funded, the priorities and vision that were established by the community, so I want to stress that this is a community-driven plan. We're here to fit it all together, make sure it hangs together, and resolve any discrepancies, but it is community-driven. And then we'll talk about the strategies, the recommendations that are in the area-wide plan that you'll be asked to approve at your regular session coming up, and I think next steps, I should have taken this off the slide, next step is at your work session, approve it or not. So, next slide, Helen. So a quick overview, you can go on to the next one. So the background on this project, as a reminder, it is a, funded by a grant from the Environmental Protect, the federal environmental protection agency. CDPEHE, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, got a $2 million grant. It, the funds in there are for assessment and planning of brownfield properties that any community in Colorado is eligible. Cortez, however, is named in that grant specifically by name, so first dibs on that funding. And like I said, some of the eligible planning activities are up there. They do include some assessments. They include the corridor planning that we're going to talk about now. They also include plans for specific sites that can be requested by the owner, and we are working on a couple of those in Cortez as well. Next slide. And you might be wondering, what's a brownfield? I'm so glad you ask. It is actually a very broad definition. It's not just a property that's dirty, as you might think. It is, in fact, a property that is underutilized, and that redeveloping it or developing it might be complicated by either the actual presence or a public perception that there might be hazardous substances, pollutants, or contaminants. So just the idea that it could be polluted is enough to make it a brownfield and eligible for these activities. Next slide. So you had a small image on what Helen went through. This is the study area, so it is about a mile long, and it goes from Third to, we don't have a terminating street on the bottom, to just south of where Chronic Therapy is, and it is predominantly commercial parcels. As Helen said, there are topographic features, particularly to the west. There is some residential, and generally, the residential is not included in it. Should we just look at the commercial properties? Next slide. So what's in the plan? You know, there's, there's four general steps in there. So existing conditions, we take a look at what's on the ground, as well as what's actually in current policy. Then we go out and talk to and interact with the community to establish a vision and priorities, what they really want to see in this area and in Cortez as a whole. Then we make the recommendations, and there is also an action plan matrix, which is kind of a how-to-get-there, when things should happen, who's, who's the champion for them, and which projects are critical path, which are linked to each other. Next slide. And this is my standard disclaimer. So an area-wide plan is a framework. It is not a directive to go and immediately do everything. So we fully know that this is a long-term build-out. Not everything in there will get done, and there'll be some great opportunities that come along that you want to capitalize, that we couldn't anticipate that aren't in the plan. The plan does, although we said it doesn't cover a lot of residential property, it does cover both private and public property. So the little graphic there, what I always say, shoot for the moon, even if you miss, you'll land in the stars. So this is a map and an aspiration. Next slide. So the vision that we have up here was established by the project working group, I think, Helen, you can verify. I think we had 15 members on the project working group, and that was a combination of property owners, business owners, along the Broadway Corridor, as well as folks from the community at large, and even from the region. So everybody who has a concern or stands to have an interest in the future of the corridor had the opportunity beyond that project working group. And we also did a survey, and I want to pat you all on the back. We did the survey in April of last year, and we got 970 responses. Actually, I think once we added in some high school responses and some paper surveys, we might have topped it for 1,000. So that is where both the vision and the priorities come from. So you can see the vision up here. I won't read it to you.
And I'll just echo, we did, we got 33 high school respondents from their high school class, so that did top us out over.
We're probably at 1,003. It's also, it's almost a palindrome, like today's date. So the, the priorities, like the vision established by the community themselves, and we've color-coded them and loosely grouped them by topic here. So the orange are immediate issues, as you can see, cleaning up the corridor and improving safety. We heard a lot about pedestrian and bicycle safety. Those are really things that, although these aren't necessarily in order, those are definitely the ones that I would flag to follow up on most immediately. The blue ones are looking at enhancing or extending what's already there, and then the green ones are really looking forward into the future and starting to evolve the South Broadway Corridor into something that's not quite today, or what we're hoping is going to be. Next slide. So the strategies. How are we going to address all eight of those, those priorities? So we have four buckets of strategies, if you will, and then there's action steps under each strategy. So the first one, revitalizing properties. This deals a lot with the land use. Helen, if you want to skip ahead, then you can go to the next one, like my big numbers. So there are, roughly speaking, there's five strategic actions under revitalizing properties. You can see them listed here, and we'll give you examples of some of the leading ones, but happy to answer questions about any of them. Next slide. So the first one we've got there is catalyst site designation, and some of the catalyst sites, we've circled there in red on the, on the map. Obviously, the Johnson Building is a wonderful opportunity, right, as you come into the community to really have something special, and then the parcel right across the street from it could also be revitalized, so that the two of them together act kind of like your bookends, marking your entry into, into Cortez. And then also, it's, it's actually two separate properties that are just south of McElmo there. Those, that's the largest piece of vacant property in the corridor, so it's a good opportunity for anything that might need a large footprint. So a different, a different strata of hotel, maybe custom experiential businesses, anything that needs more land than some of the other parcels would allow. Next slide. Urban infill. This is not exclusively, but a lot of vacant, vacant properties or underutilized properties. So the, the two that are circled kind of on the southern part of that image are the properties on both sides of San Juan, and you can see that's what the, the aerial there. Those might be a little bit challenging, both because of the shape of the kind of five-sided one and the shallow depth of the one that's north of the roadway, but the plan does have some, some suggestions for those. I think the, the, would it be a hexa, the hexagonal one, we designated as a flex site, a lot of uses could work there. And the kind of skinnier, shallower one could be an opportunity for a building, like a shallow storefront against the roadway with a single, single-loaded parking behind, probably not a lot of retail, because you would need more parking, but something more like live-work units or that sort of thing. And then also, another urban infill would be, we don't have an image, but north on here, in particular, the Old Sonic, with a new Sonic right next to it. The Old Sonic is a great opportunity, and then very at the top of that image, there's another piece of vacant property. Adaptive reuse. So there are, adaptive reuse is a wonderful way to revitalize corridors. There are honestly not a lot of buildings on the corridor that are really good candidates for adaptive reuse. Now, the great, the great thing is that the Johnson Building and the Mesa Verde Inn both have interest in being adaptively reused. They're kind of in flux and different status right now. And then also, and I want to go back to my moon and the stars image that I had up there, about this being a framework and not expecting anyone to move immediately. There are two buildings at the northern portion of the corridor. They currently house True West and Napa. They're kind of big shell buildings, so that if those businesses were to move out, and we're not suggesting that they have to, those buildings could be good for, you know, artisanal crafts, even something like laser tag, we're gonna talk about experiential things, but they're kind of a blank slate, and reusing those buildings that are largely, like I said, just a shell, can be less expensive than building new. Next slide. And then zoning refinements. We did have a couple of suggestions here. You can see them on the right side of the slide in blue. There are a number of auto-centric uses in the code that are, that are currently permitted by right, and the city could consider moving those to a conditional use, so that the city has more control over both the location and the site design. And some examples of that are truck and trailer parking lots, auto repair, manufactured home sites, and rental, I'm sorry, sales and rental. The second was temporary and interim uses. That's one of our big suggestions, to bring activity to the corridor while it's in the process of revitalizing, and it's not clear if they are absolutely allowed or not. So our suggestion is simply to modify the code so that they are obviously allowed and permitted for, you know, and it can be for a specific amount of time. Similarly, there are a number of artisan trades that could, you know, like lithography, small-scale furniture production, that could also use some clarification in the code. Next slide. The second strategy has to do with multimodal transportation. As I said, we heard a lot about people who really do want to walk and bike, not necessarily along the corridor, but to connect to the larger community, but it's very not safe right now. So two of the biggest recommendations that we had related to multimodal transportation is new signals at, on the north at Canyon and Third, and then a new signal down on the south at McElmo. So those signals would do a couple of things. As Helen showed in her graphic, there's only one signal at Seventh on the stretch of the corridor, so if you're trying to reach something on the other side, it's a really long distance, possibly with a lot of. possibly with a lot of out-of-direction travel if you're on a bike or walking. So two new signals would break the corridor down into a more manageable scale for those non-motorized users. And, uh, on the south, it gives you, it gives us the opportunity to connect to the Hawkins Trail by a new spur trail that would connect to the Broadway down to that existing trail. And then up at the north at Canyon and Third, that's right on the corner there that is just south of the, that abuts the middle school sports fields. So it would contribute to safer route to school and a safer crossing there with a lot of more vulnerable users, the students in that area. Next slide. We, the plan also has a number of recommendations related to pedestrian and cyclist infrastructure, hard infrastructure actually on the roadways. Um, so we have a recommended section for Broadway, which is on the next slide I want to talk about. But we also created these sections for Seventh and Chestnut Streets as a low-stress alternative to Main Street, actually, so that we can connect into the community, um, without going on Main Street, which has a lot of traffic and is also, um, more lanes. So the, the right-of-way on, um, on these two roadways is similar and there's, there's two options. This happens to be the illustration of Seventh, which is why you see on the left side of the sections, there's, um, there's a power pole. So we give an option on the top that has, um, protected bike lanes on each side. Or you could go with a single bidirectional bike lane that's shown on the bottom. And if that were the choice, we would recommend that it goes on the south side of the roadway because of those power poles on the north side. Uh, next slide. Then when it comes to Broadway itself, um, there are businesses on Broadway and hopefully as the plan progresses, there will be many more so that people have, want to reach things on Broadway. And again, we have two options for a section here and I just want to absolutely note Broadway is a state highway. So these are drawn with the idea that nothing changes between the curbs. So the median stays as it is, the curbs stay where they are. Um, these are modifications behind the curb. So in the upper option, there is a bike lane on the left side that's separated from the pedestrian walking path. So you kind of, everybody gets their own space. And then on the, it would be on the east side of the roadway, we don't have as much room because by and large, the buildings on the east side of Broadway sit closer to the street. So there, it's a combined multimodal path. Alternately, on the bottom section, you could choose to go to an entirely different section, just keep a sidewalk over there on the east side of the roadway and have a wider, more expanded multimodal bike path separated from the, um, the pedestrians on the, the west side. So any changes like this would need to be, uh, coordinated with CDOT, obviously. Uh, but the goal is to make it possible to actually move up and down the Broadway corridor. Not in a car. Next slide. Oh, right, over there. Um, and then a multimodal, uh, recommendation, and I said we generally didn't deal with the residential, but these were kind of low-hanging fruit. We took a look at the two, um, mobile home communities that are just on the west side of Broadway. And it seemed a fairly lo- easy opportunity to get a second access point into those. So in the case of the southern one, which is just north of Seventh Street, um, that would give a second, uh, a second access for, um, folks in that community could come out onto Seventh, they'd come out onto a fully signalized intersections and they could have right-in, right-out. I'm sorry, they could have full movement, uh, turning out of their community. The northern one, um, let me just, I always forget the name of the street. I didn't write it down. The northern one would bring, bring you out onto, um, onto, I can't write the name of that. Sorry, Helen. Um, that is a, it's not a signalized intersection, but it is, uh, the median has a break there so that the same, the folks in that community could come out and they could have full movement, although not signalized. Um, it would be a benefit for the folks who live in those mobile home communities as well as an added entrance for, uh, emergency services to get in there. Next slide. Helen, are you okay? Did you get to plug in? Yes. Uh, third, third bucket of recommendations have to do with, uh, creating a sense of community. Uh, so strategic actions. One thing that is notable along the corridor is that there is not a lot of, um, open space that, uh, folks can call their own. And so it would be good to have some kind of space both for the community, and it doesn't have to be huge, as well as potentially a space that merchants along the South Broadway corridor could program and have events. So in the bottom image, uh, we marked one location where a park or plaza could be, and it's important that it is near, but not directly on Broadway. Um, this is directly south of the Mesa Verde Inn. So when or if that does redevelop, having a space there that those residents could also enjoy makes it a good location, um, or how big it has to be. And then, uh, the top image, we're also suggesting the potential for a history park that could be, uh, more tourist-oriented and it should focus on, uh, it would involve the Ute Mountain Ute Tribe as well as a local historical society to make sure that we have a really comprehensive representation of the history of the community. I think we got to speed it up or we're almost there. Next slide. Helen, are you good? Next slide. There we go. Another strategic action for creating that sense of community, uh, has to do with enhancing the streetscape, uh, both along Broadway as part of that cross-section I showed, but also on the connecting streets and aesthetic enhancements. Some of the examples that we've got on here, you can see we've got street signs that have a little branding on them and that could be branding for Cortez or it could be branding for the corridor. Um, neighborhood signs that give the community, public art, bike counters are fun, um, and really kind of human, human scale, and then the streetscape as well. Next slide. And then finally, that sense of commu- community, uh, really seeking out those experiential business opportunities. Uh, Helen mentioned this as part of the market study, but looking for businesses, community groups, they wanted something to do, you know, not solely tourist-oriented, but something that families could do, something that people could do in the evenings. Um, so there's a whole gamut of experiential, uh, activities and they can be custom-built, you know, like a Dave and Buster's or like a trampoline bounce empire. Um, Chicken and Pickle is one that came up in discussion. Or they can be much smaller and fit into storefronts, maybe on that, that shallow parcel, um, near San Juan that I was talking about. And that's like paint-your-own-pottery community woodshops, board game libraries, things like that, that provide entertainment for the community and potentially for tourists as well. Are we, am I lagging? Are you on the next slide, Helen? There we go. Market and-
It is lagging.
The last bucket of recommendations has to do with marketing and branding the corridor. And you can move ahead to the next slide.
There we go.
I'm not sure if you're seeing it, but so the, the next slide would be community events and traditions. And so that's, again, things to activate the area, help bring more life to it, get people to it. That can be permanent or that can be another really good strategy as the corridor is evolving. So if there's vacant lots, if there's, you know, large parking lots that aren't used, having things like pop-up markets, concerts, and they don't have to be on a nice green lawn like that, are things, um, that assist in that, that goal. And, uh, I was, I was having a little fun with AI here. The, the South Broadway Improvement District, AI is terrible at spelling. This is by no means what we're suggesting, but the next slide has the recommendation thing of that sort that does kind of take ownership of the corridor and organize both beautification as well as events. Uh, next slide. The next slide, it has branding and, and promotions. Uh, so again, these are, um, some examples on the slide, there you go, of, um, places that other things have done to really give, in this case, we're looking for Broadway to really have a personality. And it could be in monumental signage, it could be on banners, it can actually be on the roadway like you see there in the lower right-hand corner, um, to create that identity so people think of South Broadway as a specific place and a part of the community. And then my last slide, the last one, on that, uh, we're going to talk about signage program. And one of the key things of the community, but as you can see here, we've got a signage family. So we call it a program because it's really important to have a variety of signage that's calibrated to the mode so that there is signage for people who are walking, for biking, and people who are driving by. Uh, and we take care of all of those and get them where they need to be and also obviously help mark the South Broadway corridor. Questions? I think that's the end of what I have, Helen, so I can field questions at any point now.
All right, questions? Okay.
Um, we, we recently, uh, we just updated our land use code and we, we know probably within the next six months to a year, we're probably going to have to go back in and do some, some edits to that. And, um, my question is, do you have, for, for some of the, the land use recommendations, um, particularly around the temporary or interim things, do you have some, um, do you have some language, like draft language that you could share with us for, for those kind of updates, potential updates?
And I fear my computer has lost-
Gosh.
Oh, wait, no, Rhonda is there. Great, go ahead.
Um, I don't have any off the top of my head, but it's certainly something that we could research.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any more questions.
All right.
So we sure appreciate it. Very good presentation.
Thank you, counsel.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you. We're going to move on to B, Natural Medicine Ordinance Process Discussion presented by City Manager Sanders.
Yes, good evening, counsel. Uh, you'll recall last meeting that we, uh, talked about as a group about how to best to move forward with the natural medicine ordinance. Uh, as you know, we currently have a moratorium on that, uh, moving forward, but we need to move, uh, fairly quickly. We have about four months left to make this happen. Last time we talked about, uh, perhaps putting together a committee that would involve, uh, some council members, staff, uh, certain members from the public, specifically mental health professionals, uh, perhaps law enforcement, county health department, et cetera. So after discussing it more with, uh, our mayor and with, uh, Councilmember Randall, a, a couple of good ideas came out of this. Number one, a committee is probably not the way to go, at least on the four-month schedule that we're on. Uh, that's going to put us quite a bit longer and, and complicate things. The idea was posed, and I honestly think it was, came from both sources, that perhaps we hold a public meeting or two, or maybe more, depending on what council feels. Uh, in this room, we would, uh, have special workshops where we would invite members of the, uh, community as well as, um, uh, certain health, you know, health and other professionals to, to come and talk. And then sort of hash this out, uh, you know, over the time and probably schedule at, at least two hours for that, for each session. And then, uh, council could take not only, uh, council comments, but public input as well as staff input. Our city attorneys put together a really good worksheet on this that I think was distributed last time. And, um, I, I, I'm going to suggest to council that perhaps that's the way to go and then we can start moving forward with scheduling those. The earliest one that I can see would be in late June, uh, to, to when we could schedule the first one, perhaps. So I pose that to council for your comments, input and suggestions.
Well, I think it's a great idea. I, I like it, I think it'd be, uh, it'll go faster and it, uh, gets the community involved. So I, I, I like the fact that, uh, we can, uh, just jump right in and get after it.
Counsel, I, I would add that, uh, Councilmember Randall came up with some very good suggestions of other possible, uh, topics that we might include in the ordinance. So my plan was to generate that worksheet and add some of the, the additional suggestions that came out of our discussions with Councilmember Randall.
I agree with Dennis. I, I think that's a great idea to, uh, move forward with that. The one thing I would say though is, um, I, I don't think it's realistic to, uh, schedule something the end of, uh, June because several of us would just be getting back from Breckenridge. That's about the last week in, in June. So I think realistically, we're looking, uh, early July. We've got to be cognizant of the, the holiday there, but, um, that would probably be the first time. But this is a great way to, uh, move rapidly with this.
I guess I just have a process question and this is just maybe based on years of being in, um, not only city council, but with, um, different volunteer groups, et cetera. So if we hold a couple of sessions and we have no one who comes or very few people who show up, are we then kind of reverting back to the idea that council will be making the decisions within the scope that we, we are allowed to make decisions? I like the idea of including public. I mean, absolutely a thousand percent that needs to happen either way. But I guess my question is, what if nobody comes?
And that's okay too. At least we're offering it to the community. And I, I think you're probably only going to get very interested people and probably people that we invite to do that, but that's okay. I mean, it is a council duty and the whole purpose of that really is to get any concerned residents to, to voice their concerns so you can consider and weigh that as part of your ultimate decision. But it's still a council decision in the end.
I, I don't know how about going, making this proposal, but I would like to see somebody chair that and our area ref, uh, expert next to me, uh, Councilwoman Roundoff would, Randall would be excellent if she'll accept it. And I think, I think we need somebody to head it up to really make the ball move.
Okay, um, I'm generally like on a workshop, it would still be the mayor chairing the meeting just like you are right now.
So is the council, the entire council going to be involved in this rather than certain members?
Correct, yes. That, that would be-
Got it.
It would be a special workshop. Very much like you're sitting there now in a workshop session, it would just be a special one off normal calendar date.
Okay, got it, got it.
So, but the same sort of thing. And, um, yes, we're going to need her input, I can tell you right now. She's probably the most schooled up on just about anybody here, if not, period.
Could I make the recommendation that we have these on Tuesdays?
We have them on Tuesdays?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would make it easier for those of us who have to follow schedules for work outside of the regular hours.
Okay. Any other input, counsel? So we could, uh, schedule it on an off Tuesday? And I think I already had a tentative date. I've got to look again. Uh, and it was mid-June, so correct me, I would correct you on that, I am cognizant of CML, uh, but I'm also, uh, feeling a sense of urgency on this too. It'd be nice to be able to knock one out, uh, perhaps mid-June, but we will weigh that and see how that works out. And then, um, I would like to suggest that the city attorney update his, uh, his worksheet that he's got here and then let's get that distributed out to council, uh, if that's the will of the council and okay with Mr. Coleman. But, uh, I count seven different ideas that, uh, Councilmember Randall, uh, added and I think they probably ought to be part of this. That way you can start posing some of your concerns and, and have them ready to discuss then and it won't be cold. Anything else, counsel? Okay, just to clarify, we will move into as, as soon as reasonably possible to, uh, starting with one and probably more than one workshop, a special workshop, uh, perhaps as early as mid-June, uh, likely in July, but we will try to schedule that out Tuesdays on off-council nights. And we will send out an updated worksheet as soon as practical. And then, oh, one last thing, uh, I've already got a couple of invitations out. I, I have not responded today, but, uh, Joe Fein, the CEO of the hospital, and, um, I can't remember her title, but I think she's the chief medical officer for the hospital, has already agreed, uh, to participate. And so with this direction, I can go back to her and, and give her some times on this. So, thank you. And we will start and putting out other invitations. Exactly, yes. Okay, counsel, that does it for me.
Okay, let's move on- Okay, let's move on to C, Discussion on Council Staff Communication and Setting Matters for Future Action, again, presented by Manager Sanders.
Yeah, Council, thank you very much. I was, wanted to spend 10 or 15 minutes talking a little bit more about Council communication and trying to get clear instruction for Mr. Coleman and I from the Council. And we've struggled with that a little bit, but to be quite honest, we're missing two voices in the room tonight that I really feel strongly need to be here because I know at least one of them has a pretty strong opinion on this. And perhaps the other, I just have not spoken to her. And with that, Council, and I know this will let us release early, but can I bring this back before you next workshop?
I think that's a real good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that being dealt with, let's go on to Council General Discussion. Does anybody on Council have anything they want to discuss or talk about?
I have a question about a matter that we first looked at back in January, and I didn't know if it got resolved. I was just curious as to where it went. But that's, it was initially put forth as Resolution Number Two, which of Series 2025, which had to do with elevated liquors and smoke getting a drive-in window. And it got pushed off of the, and I never heard anything about it since then, did anyone?
Yeah, and I know the issue, and I know that it got stalled out. I don't remember what the issue, or why they stalled out, but I don't think we got a completed application back. I would have to verify that, but I will do that in between the meetings, and then I will have an answer for you next meeting, in the regular stated meeting.
Do they have an active drive-up window now?
They are, no, they are not supposed to. If they do, I don't believe that's happening. There's, and I want to be careful. This is quasi-judicial, et cetera. But they do not have a permit or space to do that currently.
I don't want to say anything that's quasi-judicial either, but there is still a sign that says "drive-up window" with an arrow pointing in that direction. I don't know if it's...
Yeah, we're aware of that, and no, they do not. And, you know, but we can't regulate what's on their sign. But I will have an answer for you. Thank you, Council.
Anybody else for general discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and end the work session and start back up at 7:30.